Good afternoon. Today is September 3, 2020, and this is the call to order of the Rancho Mirage meetings, including the City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Isaiah, are you there? Can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much. Let's do a roll call. Kristi, can you handle that for us?
Of course. Councilmember Kite? Councilmember Kite, you're on mute.
Go to the next council member, and we'll come back.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Here.
Mayor Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Kite?
You're still on mute, councilmember. Please unmute yourself. It's a picture of a microphone with a red line through it. He is, but he's having problems unmuting himself.
Is anybody able to help him?
Yes, just give us one moment, please. We got you.
Yeah, I can hear you, Richard.
Does that count as a?
I'm present.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, folks. No problem. We have a special presentation that Isaiah is going to introduce us to somebody who's going to become a continuing member of our family. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce our new Fire Chief for Riverside County, Chief Weiser. I believe you're on the line.
I am indeed. Thank you very much, Honorable City Mayor and City Council, along with the City Manager. It's a pleasure to be on the line with you, and I just wanted to introduce myself. I was appointed on August 4th as the Fire Chief by the Ward Supervisors, and it's a pleasure to be working with all of you in the future. I wanted to put a face on it, but I guess you'll just have to do a sound of it, which is fine.
Well, Isaiah said you were extremely good-looking, so we'll just go with that.
I know Isaiah, I'm sure he's a very honest person, but I think he might have a little on that one. But okay, what are you gonna do?
That's great.
That's all I really had for all of you. Thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you for real in the future. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Chief. And we'll move forward to non-agenda public comment. Would you handle that, Isaiah?
Certainly, Mayor. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on issues that are not on today's agenda for a maximum of three minutes. So if you would like to make a non-agenda public comment, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely and you're on Zoom, you can hit the Raise Hand button, and that will alert us that you'd like to make a non-agenda public comment at this time. If you are joining us by telephone, you would press *9 on your telephone, and that will alert us that you would like to make a non-agenda public comment. Before we go to those that are participating remotely, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to make a non-agenda public comment? Seeing no one here, let's go to our remote audience. And I'm not seeing anyone that would like to make a non-agenda public comment at this time. So, Mayor, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the meeting, and I'll return it to you for councilmember comments.
Go with councilman comments. Who is ready or would like to go first?
Dana, I'm here.
Okay, Richard?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Over the last few years, the city has been asked about the lack of cell coverage in Rancho Mirage. Well, now there are two new cell towers under construction in the city, one at the Weston Mission Hills and one at the Children's Discovery Museum. The new facility at the Weston has been operational since December, but the tower itself is still under construction. It should be completed by month's end. The monopole at the Children's Discovery Museum is moving fast. It is not yet operational, but should be completed by the year's end. Once finished, it will give us good coverage over those gap areas in the city. Both facilities are being constructed on behalf of AT&amp;T. For more information, you can always call City of Rancho Mirage at 760-324-4511. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richard. Who else would like to make a comment?
Dana, I have a comment.
Okay.
Okay. This is Iris.
Yeah, go ahead, Iris.
Okay, thank you, Dana. And hello to everyone out there. I would like to introduce you to and say a few words about someone very special, not only to Rancho Mirage, but also to our Emergency Preparedness Commission, the entire Coachella Valley, and someone with credentials above and beyond measure. And that person is our wonderful Dr. Dennis Malletti. Most of you probably already know Dr. Malletti, but you probably don't know about his incredible accomplishments. Dennis is Professor Emeritus at the Department of Sociology, a research scientist at the Natural Hazard Center at the University of Colorado at Boulder, and has honored us with his presence, his opinions, and his hard work as an advisor and speaker with our Emergency Preparedness Commission. And over the last 11 years, he has appeared at our Rancho Mirage Town Hall forums as well as the Annenberg Sunday Light Center, speaking in his fun and charming manner to help us all prepare for the big one. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately for Dennis, after serving the City of Rancho Mirage for the last decade, he is now taking time off to enjoy some well-deserved private time, but will hopefully come back whenever possible to update us with new information on appropriate procedures and appropriate behavior during times of disaster. So I would like to introduce you also to another very special person, and that is Mary Lou Suter. Over the past several years, Mary Lou has chaired our Emergency Preparedness Commission, and with her skillful leadership, has made enormous strides in reaching out to our disparate communities. Mary Lou will be joining us by telephone, and so will Dennis Malletti. So welcome to you both. And Mary Lou, I will hand it over to you now.
Mary Lou, can you hear me?
I believe you can hear me now.
We can.
Thank you. Thank you, Iris, and greetings to Mayor Hobart and to the City Council members and to the City Manager and staff and guests. And thank you so much for allowing us to present this to you today. To continue with some of Dr. Malletti's accomplishments and credentials, I wanted to let you know that he is the author of more than 100 publications, including a book called "Disasters by Design," which is a groundbreaking book on managing hazards in the United States to result in disaster-resistant communities, economic sustainability, and improved quality of life. Dr. Malletti is a former director of the Natural Hazard Center at the University of Colorado at Boulder, where he is Professor Emeritus. Dr. Malletti provided oversight of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' investigation of the societal impacts of the Lundy failures during Hurricane Katrina, for which he was awarded the U.S. Army Civilian Medal of Honor. Dr. Malletti designed and oversaw the study of the evacuation of the World Trade Center on 9/11 for the U.S. Congress. He chaired the Committee on Natural Hazards and the National Academy of Sciences. Dr. Malletti chaired the Board of Visitors to FEMA's National Training Center for the Emergency Management Institute, which developed and delivers emergency management training to states, territories, local and tribal governments and their officials, to volunteer organizations, to FEMA's disaster workforce, and to other federal agencies, and to the public and private sectors, with the purpose of minimizing the impact of disasters and emergencies on the American public. My gosh, we have been so fortunate to have Dr. Malletti here on our commission. In addition, Dr. Malletti was appointed as a California Seismic Safety Commissioner to advise our state about earthquake legislation. During Dr. Malletti's service as an advisor to the Rancho Mirage Commission, he drew from his extensive cadre of colleagues and brought an amazing array of experts into Rancho Mirage to speak to our residents at our town hall forums. The best of the best came here to speak to us in Rancho Mirage as Dr. Malletti's request. All this and more, this incredible bundle, this person of the very highest level of experience and expertise, became a resident of Rancho Mirage and volunteered and brought with him his wealth of information to our city and to our residents to help us learn to work together in emergencies, to reduce future disaster damages, and to enhance disaster preparedness, response, and recovery. For this and for so much more, we thank Dr. Dennis Malletti, the ultimate professor, our colleague, and our friend. Now, please allow me to read the inscription on the plaque for Dr. Malletti. City of Rancho Mirage: Recognition of Service. The City of Rancho Mirage Community Emergency Preparedness Commission hereby recognizes Dennis Malletti, Ph.D., Technical Advisor to the Rancho Mirage Community Emergency Preparedness Commission. For his 11 years since February 21, 2009, for his 11 years of service to the Emergency Preparedness Commission, the residents of Rancho Mirage, and to the public at large, his efforts and expertise have had an immeasurably positive impact on disaster preparedness throughout Rancho Mirage and has been an invaluable resource to this commission. On this day, the 25th of August, 2020, presented by the entire Emergency Preparedness Commission and staff, including myself as Chair, Mary Lou Suter, and then Commissioners David Richardson, Robert Brown, Mary Levine, Technical Advisor Kirk Dandridge, and Staff Liaison Brian Kephart. So thank you again so much for allowing us to speak with you today, and I'm hoping Dennis Malletti was actually able to get on the phone to speak with you as well. Dennis, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can, Dennis.
Oh, thank goodness. I'm not very good at these electronic devices, but what I want to say is simple. When I left the university community, it was just a privilege to join all of you here in Rancho Mirage to move the local emergency preparedness agenda forward. I've never felt as satisfied as when I've worked with you, and this is really where the rubber meets the road. I've enjoyed all the outreach to the public, to HOAs, to businesses. I've enjoyed counseling different commissioners over the years, and I've also enjoyed chatting with the City Council members about the risks we face here. There's still a lot to do, and I'm happy to say that I'm going to stay in Rancho Mirage, and I look forward to seeing you all here and there around town. Thank you for this honor and recognition, and I want to also say one more thing. I actually think of most of you, not all of you, because some of you are new, but most of you like family, so thank you for giving me that feeling. I feel welcome and part of Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. We're really honored to have you, and you and I go back to the first day, don't we?
We do.
Okay, I guess we'll move on. Dennis, I can't keep talking. I think we'll now move to City Manager comments.
I think, did, will we finish with the councilmembers? Councilmember Townsend, did you have a comment?
No, thank you at this time. That's all right, Dana.
And then I think we didn't ask Mayor Protem Wile? Doesn't look like, doesn't look like he has a comment. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make sure we didn't skip anyone. I don't have any City Manager comments today, so I will return it to you for the minute.
Okay, everybody's had a chance to read the minutes. Can we have a motion for approval?
Okay, Dana. I will move that we approve the minutes of August 20, 2020, and that is a regular meeting.
Okay. All those in favor? Well, let's go back to Kristi. Can you take the roll call, please?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Now we'll move on then to the consent calendar. Isaiah, will you take that over, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, you have seven items on your consent calendar for consideration today. Item number one is Resolution Number 2020, Next in Order, Approving an Integrated Resource Plan for the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority Community Choice Aggregation Program. Item number two is the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority 2019 Power Content Label. Item number three is the Approval of Final Track Map Number 37563. That's Section 31. Item number four is the Approval of Final Track Map Number 36809-5. This is for the Dell Web Project. Consent Calendar item number five is the Final Acceptance of Project CP20359, which was the Citywide Rubberized Crack Fill Project. Item number six are contracts, and item number seven are demands. And before we go to the council for questions or comments, let's go to members of the public. If a member of the public would like to speak on any of these items, now is the time to do so. If you are on Zoom, you would hit the Raise Hand button. If you were on the telephone, you would hit *9 on your telephone now. Before we go to those that are remote, anyone here in person that would like to make a comment on any of these items? Okay, seeing no one here in person, let's go back to our remote participants. Again, you would hit the Raise Hand button or *9 on your telephone if you are participating by phone. I'm not seeing anyone that would like to make a comment on any of these items. So, Mayor, I'll return this to the council for questions, comments, or a motion.
Isaiah, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Richard.
On item number two, could you go into a little bit more detail on that item?
Sure. Tiana, are you on the phone? So we have Tiana McAmol. She's the Senior Management Analyst that oversees this program. Tiana?
Hi, this is Tiana McAmol.
All right, Tiana, we can hear you. Did you hear Councilmember Kite's question? He just wanted a little bit more detail on item number two.
Yeah, what questions did he have on item number two?
Just more detail. So why don't you give the council a little background on what it is and why we're doing it?
Awesome. Is, I'm sorry, is that the IRP plan?
That is the Power Content Label.
Okay. So the Power Content Label, what it is, is the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, requires that all retail sellers of electric energy, including RMEA, disclose accurate, reliable, and simple-to-understand information on sources of energy that are delivered to customers. So what the PCL, the Power Content Label, does is it's information presented that shares the total energy supply related to various resource types.
So in, in maybe very simple terms, when we launched the Energy Authority, we came out and said, hey, you know, our base product, which saves customers money, is going to be 50% carbon-free, and then we also offered an optional 100% renewable plan, that customers could opt up to 100% renewable plan. And so this is just the annual filings that disclose how we meet those thresholds. Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on item three, if I may. And just, is it too premature to have a timeline of when grading or procedure on 31 is about to start?
I'll turn this over to Jesse Eckenroth, our Public Works Director. Jesse?
Thank you.
Councilmember, we do not have an official schedule from Section 31. This approval of the final map is not an approval to do any grading out there, so we don't have an official date yet, and we expect maybe somewhere around the beginning of the year, but we don't have an official date. This is just to divide the section mile into eight lots.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions that anyone has regarding any of the numbers?
Nope.
Seeing none? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I move the approval of the consent calendar. Thank you, Richard. Is there a second?
A second.
Ted seconds it. All those in favor say aye. Oh, wait, I quit the button. Kristi?
Thank you. Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much, Kristi. We'll move forward to item number eight, and Joseph Carpenter or someone is going to be explaining that for us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Joseph, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, on May 2, 2019, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 2019-18, approving a Development Impact Fee Nexus Analysis and updating the development impact fees based in part on the Development Impact Fee Nexus Analysis prepared by Will Dan Financial Services. The Nexus Analysis recommended that the City Council implement a pattern of ongoing annual adjustments using the National Engineering News Records Construction Cost Index, or CCI, and the All Urban Consumer Price Index, or CPI, for the Riverside-San Bernardino, Ontario area. The CCI increase from September 2018 to September 2019 is 1.26%. Development impact fees that incorporate buildings into their calculation are proposed to be adjusted based on the 1.26% CCI increase. The CPI increase from May 2019 to May 2020 for the Riverside-San Bernardino, Ontario area is 0.89%. Development impact fees that incorporate equipment into their calculation are proposed to be adjusted based on the 0.89% CPI increase. As has been done in the past, staff is recommending that the City Council approve and adopt a fee schedule that is lower than the maximum supported by the Nexus Analysis. The fee schedule set forth in Exhibit A of the resolution excludes a 2.5% administrative charge and reduces the commercial fee to 50% of the maximum justified fee. If adopted, the new Development Impact Fee Schedule will not take effect until November 2, 2020, as Government Code Section 66017A provides that any action adopting a fee or increasing a fee upon a development project as defined in Section 66000 may not be enacted any sooner than 60 days following the action on the adoption of the fee increase. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration this afternoon. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joseph. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. If you are a member of the public and you would like to participate in the public hearing and speak on this item, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the Raise Hand button on Zoom. If you're on the phone, you would press *9. Before we go to those that are remote, anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one here in person, let's go back to our remote audience. Again, if you're on Zoom, you would hit the Raise Hand button. If you're on the phone, it would be *9. Let's give people a minute here. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone that would like to make a comment. So, Mayor, I'll turn this over to the council for comments, questions, or a motion.
Thank you very much, Isaiah. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll make a comment, Mayor, that consistent with prior years, our city has excluded a 2.5% administrative charge. We are entitled and could, but we have chosen not to, and therefore we have kept the fees to as low as possible. So I think that that's excellent, and we continue to have that policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Does anyone else have any comment?
I do. Mr. Mayor, I would like to just pay a special compliment to Joseph for doing such an excellent job on this. In fact, we received a letter from Gretchen Gutierrez from the Desert Valley Builders Association, and to quote her in her letter, it said, "During our review, we had several questions regarding how each process was conducted. Mr. Carpenter was very helpful in explaining the entire process." So I wanted, I wanted just to thank Joseph again for doing such an excellent job as he always does. Thank you.
You're right. You're right. It's something Joseph always does. He gives us an excellent, but I also thank you, Joseph. Does anybody else have any further comment on item number? Do we have a motion?
I will make the motion then that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2020, Next in Order, Approving and Adopting an Updated Schedule of Development Impact Fees.
Can we have a?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We're going to get a little bit more of Mr. Carpenter on item number nine, having to do with the adjustment to schedule of user regulatory fees. Isaiah, do you want to take it from here?
Sure. Joseph, you're on a roll, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, on April 18, 2019, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 2019-17, approving and updating a schedule of user and regulatory fees based in part on the user and regulatory fee study prepared by Clear Source Financial Consulting. The fee study found that the city's then-existing fees were not capturing 100% of fee services. The city elected to implement the suggested course of action in the fee study, which is comprised of two elements. One, using a phase-in approach to increase cost-recovery levels and And two, implementing a pattern of ongoing annual adjustments using the All Urban Consumer Price Index, or CPI, for the Riverside-San Bernardino, Ontario area. The cost recovery level of planning fees was significantly less than other fees and are gradually being increased. As recommended in the fee study, planning fees are to increase each year by an amount not to exceed 5% until full cost recovery is achieved for most planning fees. The CPI increase from May 2019 to May 2020 for the Riverside-San Bernardino, Ontario area is 0.89%. All fees are proposed to be adjusted based on the 0.89% increase in CPI. The adjusted fees are set forth in Exhibit A of the resolution. These two fee adjustments will not result in the city capturing more than 100% of its costs for any of the fee services. This concludes my presentation. Thank you again for your time and consideration this afternoon. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joseph. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. If a member of the public would like to participate in the public hearing and make a comment, now is the time to do so. You would press the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. So let's go to those that are here in person. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. We will go back to our remote participants. Again, you would hit the raise hand button or star nine on your telephone. Okay, no one has indicated that they would like to make a comment on this item. So Mayor, I'll turn it back to the council.
Does anybody wish to have any questions or make comments?
Okay, so if there are no questions or comments, I make the motion that the city council adopt resolution number 2020, next in order, approving and adopting an updated schedule of user and regulatory fees.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we move forward to item number 10. Isaiah, do you want to take over on this?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn today's update over to Gabe Coddin, our Director of Marketing. Gabe?
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Mayor Hobart, esteemed council, I'm here today just to bring two action items to your attention related to the coronavirus pandemic. Number one would be to that the city council would adopt and approve the proposed orders from the city manager and director of emergency services. One is going to be to modify some short-term rental certificate holder obligations that address the health and safety as visitors start to return to this area and the weather turns nice. We found there were some things that we worked with code compliance and what other cities are doing in our, in our area to make sure the safety and and well-being and health of visitors and residents along. And our current face covering order would expire today, so we're extending that through October 1, 2020. So with the short-term rentals, the main aspects of this order would make it mandatory that they post upon entry a city furnished flyer stipulating that the state and local face covering requirements, that the overnight occupancy would be, would be 24 hours in effect. So in effect, it would be suspending the day, daily occupancy. So this would avoid people wanting to host big parties or host gatherings during the day that would exceed the overnight occupancy. Number three, the rental of the entire unoccupied properties only. Right now, our municipal code currently allows owners and certificate holders that they can dwell in the main property and sublace a casita or a room. So we would suspend that. It's either you, you're renting the whole property or, or nothing at all. And then finally, just an update that any violation of this order would be subject to the chapter 3.25 of the, of the municipal code for any remedies, which is a little bit stricter of an enforcement than our prior order. I will note that the order that was distributed to you today should say December 4 is the expiration of this order. It currently says September 3, so that would be in effect for a couple hours. So that, there will be a new one distributed with the proper date of December 4 for signature. And then the face coverings, this staff report says September 30, but the order will actually extend it through October 1 of 2020. Also, a quick update on our Great Plates program. It currently is running through September 9, although there is talk that the county and FEMA will extend it through September 30. But through September 9, which would be next Wednesday, there have been 78,000 meals delivered, about 263 participants, active participants in the program. This has represented about 1.7 million into our local economy. And our, the city's cost share for that after the reimbursements is close to about 100,000. So almost 80,000 meals have been delivered to those most in need and most vulnerable to COVID during, since May, since May 7, and this program is likely to continue for about another 30 days. That concludes my report, and I'm here for, with any questions.
Thank you, Gabe. Before we go to the council, if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. If you're on Zoom, you would hit the raise hand button. If you're on the telephone, you would hit star nine. Before we go to those that are remote, anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will return to our remote users. Again, star nine on your telephone or the raised hand button on Zoom. Okay, no one wishes to speak on this item? And so we will turn this over to the council for any questions, comments, or a motion. Mayor?
I do understand. This is Charlie. Gabe, how is all this information disseminated out to the residents and businesses of Rancho Mirage? I'm sure you have many ways of doing it. And my question also is to the short-term rental people. Is there a special letter that goes out to them? Or are we waiting for people just to look online at the city web?
No, great, great, great questions, councilmembers. So first part is anytime, so we've got our COVID hotline, 20, our COVID hotline, which is an 800 number manned Monday through Sunday by city staff. We also have our COVID email that people, and so that's constantly available on our website. We are constantly updating the website. We've been sending out a weekly update, so we call it the RM Weekly. And that has updated COVID information. We've also been using Nextdoor, which, that platform has been, any public agency that's operating on Nextdoor goes throughout the whole community specifically to Rancho Mirage. And we've been seeing a lot of, and then it reports back how many people have viewed that. So that's been very effective. We also use our social media channels as well. So we basically kind of hit as much as we can, as often as we can from the information. Related to the short-term rentals, we have an eBlast list of all permit holders within the city. So we have their contact information. So in the case of this order, we already have an email teed up to those certificate holders specifically, letting them know that there's a new order in effect and, and then sending them all the appropriate information. So we communicate directly with the, the permit holders as well.
Gabe, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Question is, when we're talking about short-term rentals, is that only for one night?
No, this, this would, this would require, so the order, the, the provisions in this order would require anybody who is, has a short-term rental certificate holder, who has permission to short-term rental out their house, whether they're doing that for two days, a weekend, a week, two weeks, multiple weeks, these provisions would be in place because they're a permit holder at all times, at all times when they're renting their property.
Isaiah, this is Dana.
Thank you.
To what, what is the date to which businesses have the obligation of having customers wearing face covering?
So the-
When does that depend?
The current order would extend that requirement to October 1. And so as we've been doing, we've been doing 30 days extensions on this order since the pandemic began. So it is anticipated that we will bring this back to the council for another 30-day extension at the next meeting. So we do 30 days at a time.
Has there been any non-compliance that's been brought to our attention?
You know, I think kind of, as we've talked about since the beginning of the pandemic, I think our community and our businesses have responded very appropriately. So, you know, we always sometimes encounter somebody that has an issue with wearing a face cover, but it's, it's pretty rare. It's happened a couple times at our library since our library's been open to the public, but our staff is trained. We do hear from some of our businesses that sometimes a customer has an issue with wearing a face cover. But the nice thing about our order is they get to kind of, our businesses get to blame us, the city, because it is a requirement that we are putting on them. So, you know, it happens, but it's rare.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any issue or question on this subject?
Yes, I've got a question, one more. Is there, is there a direct phone line that goes directly to someone calling it to answer all of these questions? Or is there just the phone line coming to City Hall? And how are they handled?
Yeah, so we actually have an email address where somebody can contact us by email. And then there's also a number that they can call for COVID-related questions. So on 10-1 of the staff report, somebody wanted to call in to our COVID hotline. That number is 1-877-652-4844. Or if somebody wanted to email us, it's covid19@rancho mirage ca.gov. And this information is also, can be found on our website.
Thank you, Isaiah. Very good information.
Does anyone else have any questions for anybody on this subject?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. Because this has been such difficult times for so many people, I get so many notes of compliments from people, not only with our Great Plates program, but also with all the offerings at our library and how efficiently everything is handled. And in particular, the fact that we have thought of so many things, especially that a little bag of, a couple of masks are available for people to take home with them, for the people who do run out. And people say, nothing like Rancho Mirage, they think of everything. So I wanted to thank not only Isaiah, but also Aaron Espinoza at our library for making sure that all these details are covered.
Yeah, and I'd really like to thank our staff. Our staff are the ones that do the, the day-to-day work and are out there. And I know from a city standpoint, there are still many cities that don't allow access to their facilities to the public. We've been open for several months now, so I do appreciate the hard work that the staff is doing, both with the Great Plates program and being available to the public. We do get quite a few compliments of people thanking us for being open to the public. So it's definitely the staff doing a great job. I would like to request, maybe just to make sure there's no confusion, when, if a council member is going to make a motion for item A, if they could add the date of December 4, 2020 into item A's motion, that way it's just really clear that that short-term rental rules are through December 4, 2020.
December 4? Okay, are there any further questions or statements anybody would like to make? And let's have a motion. Let's, let's separate, I'm just because of that change. We'll have a motion on item A. Who moves?
All right, I will make the motion that the city council adopt and approve the proposed orders from the city manager-director of emergency service of the city of Rancho Mirage and that A modifies all short-term rental certification holders' obligation addressing health and safety concerns are set forth in the respective order and by December 4, 2020.
It's moved in second. Please vote.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Can we have a motion now with respect to item B?
I will continue then that B extends the face covering order as approved by council on July 16, 2020 through October 1, 2020.
Through, through December 4.
No, the, the-
No, no, Dana. That, that was an A.
That was the other one?
Yeah, October 1 is good for this one, because we'll bring it back.
Right, right. Do you want me to read it again?
Yeah, start over.
All right. B extends the face covering order as approved by council on July 16, 2020 through October 1 of 2020.
We're not going to have a meeting between now and then, are we?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Okay.
And in the event that one of these orders were to expire and our meeting schedule didn't line up, what we've done in the past when that occurs is I extend the order through the next meeting date. That way, it's in effect and the council can take it up at their next available meeting. So these orders don't expire just because of a meeting schedule. I have the authority to extend them until you can meet again.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Isaiah.
We have a motion in a second, Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Have we had the motion in a second?
Yes, we have. Christie?
Okay, would you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
That's the end of the regular agenda. We move to Steve Q, who will tell us what's coming up with respect to the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm having technical difficulties on my end with the video. Not that anybody wants to see me. I'm actually here. This is what you'll see. Let me see. There, that's what you, oh, I don't know if you can see that. In any event, it's like triple exposure. The council is recessing the closed session to confirm legal counsel pertaining to existing litigation known as Save Rancho Mirage versus Thea Rancho Mirage pursuant to Government Code Section 549, but it's point 9D1. And that's the only matter that's on the closed session calendar.
To which Dana Hobart will recuse himself.
Okay, I have a question of, Jason, do we just stay on this screen? Or do we do something different or just going to roll over automatically?
The, the council will stay on the line as we adjourn into closed session.
So we don't have to do anything? Just sit tight?
Yes, sir.
For me, I would say, thank you all for a very interesting afternoon. Have a good rest of the day. Talk to you soon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.